I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order at six thirty-two. And Stephanie, would you like to determine if we have a forum?
Joe Appella, John Bonito, Greg Cavan.
Here.
Otis Salem. Stephanie Paul, my parent, Angela Baxa Lulu. Alex McNaughton.
Here by Zoom.
Justin Longley.
Here by Zoom.
Jen Cody. The Jane's on the screen. Pete Tagley, Mary Weber. We do have a forum.
All right. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to the superintendent to take us through the budget.
Hey, well, thank you, members of the board. Good evening and to our staff and parents and community members. Thank you for being here for the presentation for our two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So each year, we invest many hours in review, discussion and debate with school leaders and staff, as well as key central office personnel, to develop what we believe is an operational plan that accomplishes several things. The first, it meets the needs of our students and staff. Two, it considers the benefits, the opportunities, the safety and well-being it will provide our entire school community. And finally, is mindful of the economic realities and the impact that will have on our tax codes. So developing our budget was a collective and collaborative effort. And I always like to start with that because I think it's so important. Our school leaders and directors who review the input and requests made by their staff across many departments. I want to thank them all for their efforts they put to help us move forward a thoughtful and what I believe is a financially responsible budget. A special recognition must go to Nicole Grant, our Director of Finance, and her entire team, who remain at the heart of our budget development every year. And to my own assistant, Debbie Bliven, who supports me and the coordination of the details in the Office of the Superintendent. But before I launch into the presentation and the details that go along with that, I think it's important to remember the faces behind the numbers. This is why we're here, why it's critical for us to look ahead and propose what we know will move our district forward. And why we never want to forget that our students and staff and their well-being are central to all of our requests. So our budget should be viewed as an annual narrative, a story, if you will, about who we are, our identity as a community, what we need to fill our commitments, and how specific requests are integral to meeting the commitments in the district vision and our strategic plan. So I have to ask, what drives us? Our mission should drive us. Inspiring our students to be creative and compassionate and possessing the knowledge, skills and ability to achieve their potential, especially now in the ever-changing society in which we live and in the future where they will live. Our mission then is about preparation, if you think about that, preparing all of our students to be highly successful. And that certainly comes from all of the opportunities they are given by us, the highly qualified teachers and support personnel who are part of our team, and from the myriad of innovative and engaging opportunities they're provided, both in and as an extension of all of our classrooms. But more importantly, what should guide us? We now have an approved strategic plan with four priorities that will shape our decisions moving forward. Powerful learning, family and community engagement, diversity, belonging and well-being, and innovation and delivering value. These are goals that will guide our initiatives, our decisions, our hiring practices, our support systems, our professional learning and the educational experiences we ultimately provide all of our students. But if we start anywhere in the story, it should be first to reflect on the identity of our district. Three rural towns comprise our region, three elementary schools, one six through twelve, and an agri-science academy at a total enrollment of seven hundred and ninety-seven students. According to the latest report by Peter Prouder, our predicted enrollment will take us to approximately eight hundred and four students next year. But I want to caution that enrollment is never without unexpected fluctuations due to changes in economics, mobility patterns and other factors. We certainly all saw this post-COVID. I also want to point out that enrollment serves as an important factor as we review all of our requests. It's complex. For example, we may not significantly increase in population in any given year, but that doesn't mitigate the need for a new teacher or additional support services or resources for a new initiative. In this case, predictions have us growing over time and eventually leveling off or even decreasing slightly. But I want to go back to what I mentioned earlier. That much discussion and debate goes into our requests through the lens of our vision to support our students and staff while considering the financial impact on our communities. The requests that originated from our leaders in all of the budget categories early on in the process brought our budget to twenty-eight million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. But after a critical review of every request, and that's something that we do annually.
Nice to meet you.
I adjusted that total by two hundred and ninety-six thousand.
How you doing?
Seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. This included holding off on the request for a fifth agri-science teacher.
Where do you live, Mom?
Time we feel that salary can be offset by the tuition.
Yeah.
And the elimination of a non-certified math tutor, which I will talk about. By that is being supplanted to so you know with another certified teacher that we'll request in next year. However, I also moved five hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and one dollars in two primary areas to other funding sources to support purchased property at twenty-one thousand and property and programs at four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and one dollars. This brought our budget to twenty-seven million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars or a four-point-four-nine increase over last year. Now, I know we always want to review the percent of change over the current year in each of those object codes or categories. Some of these, as you know, are out of our control, such as salaries, as these are increases given to staff based on collective bargaining or on relevant increases for non-affiliated roles. So our personnel and salaries increased by five hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars for either new FTE or contractual increases. However, the good news is that we saw a reduction in benefits by three-point-six-three percent or a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Now, keep in mind, there was a fifteen percent increase in our premium, premium costs, but this was offset by enrollment changes, meaning a reduction or changes to the number of staff accessing our insurance. In purchased and professional and technical services, there was an increase by a hundred and eighty-one thousand due to contracted special education services, which are necessitated by new needs coming up in our district. And our new Lincoln data warehousing, which will allow staff to utilize data to support student learning, a tool we have not had in the past, but certainly need in order to make better informed decisions. In purchase property services, an increase of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars caused by simple inflationary changes. Example, our trash container services went up by over eleven percent. In other purchase services, an increase of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars for special education tuition and the impact of our transportation contract, which was recently reviewed by the Board's Finance and Operations Committee. In supplies, ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollar increase was due to rising energy costs. In property and programs, an increase of a hundred and eighteen thousand and fifty-one dollars, which has to do with the addition of capital projects and program improvements. Again, we'll revisit this in just a few moments. And finally, our dues and fees category saw an increase of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars due to amortizing our loan payment or the ban, the bonded anticipation note for the agri-science state holdback. Now, if we take a deeper dive into these same categories and the increase of one million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, we see that payroll increase I highlighted earlier at three-point-five-one percent. Special education increased thirty-three-point-four-five percent. And the new reading program, which will cost one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that includes program costs, resources and training. Our debt serviced increased by fifteen-point-ninety-five percent that I mentioned due to the loan payment and the facility improvements to address some of the maintenance in our buildings. That's at one hundred and eighteen percent. The increase seems high in the facilities area, but please keep in mind that this is due to the fact that this line item had been reduced in last year's budget, which is why you see a higher percentage now. Now, the staffing increase or increases included some new additions, including a point-two music teacher to go from the current point-four to point-six FTE. While this is still not even a full-time employee, it will make it far more feasible and efficient for our music teacher to navigate between three schools, one per day, um, one day for each or the equivalent hours. As you all know, we had multiple conversations as well with staff and parents and community and selectmen regarding the increased security measures for our elementary schools, something I happen to be a huge proponent of. So I am proposing the addition of three-point-oh FTE armed security guards, one at each elementary school, who are typically hired as retired police officers with a strong law enforcement background and a great deal of experience. At Chapag, and after much reflection on our data relevant to math scores, we believe the inclusion of a one-point-oh FTE math interventionist um, is necessary and will go a long way in helping our students be successful. The interventionists, and we have others obviously in the district, will work to support students who struggle in specific areas of math instruction and who need this support to gain a higher level of confidence and a higher level of skill. This certified math physician will eliminate the need for a non-certified math tutor that I mentioned earlier. The tutor position has remained vacant, just so you know this year, but we believe supplanting with the certified math interventionist will help support our learners with a much higher degree of fidelity. The next addition is important since we do not currently have full-time clerical support for our Director of Teaching, Learning and Assessment. Originally, if you recall, we had clerical support that was split between the new agri-science program at the time and the curriculum director's office. More than likely, it was because for a time period, if you recall, the previous curriculum director also supported agri-science prior to hiring our new director. After it was clear that the agri-science director certainly needed full-time support, but that wasn't fully realized on the curriculum side. Now with our new Director of Teaching, Learning and Assessment, who will be introduced this evening, it makes all the sense in the world to support this full-time position who oversees all of the teaching and learning and assessment initiatives, professional development, testing, and a wide array of district initiatives at every grade level, across every building and across all departments. Most notably, we are now under deadline to satisfy the state with the new teacher evaluation and professional development plan by July, implement a new state-mandated reading program in alignment with the science of reading by the fall, not to mention all of the commitments we've outlined in the strategic plan related to teaching and learning. And lastly, and this is simply for transparency, as it is actually budget-neutral, is the ending of three grant-funded literacy tutors at the elementary level who were hired specifically to help post-COVID, to add a level of support for our students, and who were extended, just so you know, an additional year. However, we do already have these same supports in each elementary building, and the new reading program will certainly be implemented at the classroom level to ensure students of all ability levels can access the curriculum, in particular around foundational literacy skills. So there are two elementary program improvements that I want to talk about that we are proposing, one that is mandated and one that was developed by our team to add enrichment for our younger students. Now, if you recall, you had just recently a presentation by Mike Croft at a previous board meeting of primary partners, where fourth and fifth grade students will travel to Chapag three to four times during the year to get an enriching experience, instructionally developed in partnership between elementary and secondary teachers in alignment with the concepts that are being taught in both the areas of science and in the theater and the arts. So it's over a two-year period. The proposed funding for this is seven thousand, two hundred dollars, and that includes both the transportation and the stipends for teachers to plan outside of their typical planning to make this an innovative and engaging experience for our students. So we're really, really thrilled about that. And finally, the new reading program was selected after the pilot of two programs in response to the state mandate, which is meant to provide better foundation, support for our young readers in literacy skills. The cost to us would be a hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and this was after the eighty-nine thousand dollars in grant funding we have was applied to the original cost of a hundred and one, hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. This will include, include program costs, resources and professional development for all of our staff. I know there's been much talk, just so you know, at the state level about the very short list of reading programs districts were able to choose from. Um, but we felt that this particular program, and I know we just talked about it at our, at our curriculum meeting this evening, and you will hear many more details about it. We felt it was the most appropriate for our students, and feedback from the teachers was very, very positive. And that would happen in grades K through five. At Chapag, there are two program improvement requests for next year. The first is the accelerated college dual enrollment program through Ed Advance. Now, this was also recently presented by Don Shells with no cost to our district, but will provide what we feel is a high level of value to students interested in gaining college credits or even if they start early enough as freshmen to obtain an associate's degree upon graduation through that partnership. And it does include a partnership, not just with Ed Advance, but with Central Connecticut State University. Currently, we would be piloting two areas in the fall around engineering and manufacturing. The second program improvement request at SBS includes funding for culture and climate assemblies with Dr. Michael Cowan, who uses humor and storytelling and experiences to address social and emotional issues that students often grapple with and that interfere with learning, things like bullying and isolation and a sense of belonging. This is at a cost of four thousand, five hundred dollars, and it will address, just so you know, many of those issues that came up during the Anti-Defamation League assemblies this past year or last year, where students voiced a variety of concerns related to school, their perceptions and their own experiences. So moving on in capital facilities, we have needed repairs, as you all know, to all of our schools, and this is at a cost of one hundred and seventy-three thousand. These requests include the repair on a, of an elevator seal at Burnham, replacing an electric panel at Booth Free, adding AC in the nurses' office and music rooms, and a heating circulator at WPS. At Chapag, a fire alarm lightning response system repairs to the roof, the addition of PA speakers and a BMS building management system, light connections. But we also thought you should know what is being proposed for the budget is not the end of the story. We wanted to share those items that we moved to other sources of funding to lessen the impact on the budget. Capital facilities being funded by capital reserve and re-appropriated funds equate to seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. This includes those vestibules for each of the schools to provide a stopgap for all visitors prior to entering our buildings. This allows us to vet each visitor and provide a higher level of security for all of our buildings. This proposed cost is three hundred thousand and is another priority aside from our new armed officers in the area of security. New network switches for our technology system is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. State mandated HVAC assessments, which we have to conduct, ninety-nine thousand. At our elementary schools, we propose the installation of shatterproof window security film at a cost of fifty-five thousand, yet another security measure. At Chapag, we need to conduct a septic line repair, which resulted in disruption to some of our cafeteria bathrooms just this year for a cost of eighty thousand. And the installation of a dishwasher for thirty-five thousand, a commercial dishwasher, I should say, for thirty-five thousand that does not currently exist and forces cafeteria workers there to wash dishes and equipment by hand. Obvious inefficiencies to them. In capital facilities at the elementary level, we were able to address other needs through the elementary non-recurring fund. So while they are not added to the budget, I want to be clear that these additional security measures that were presented and discussed at our community conversation meetings will be in place using these funds. At Booth, Burnham and WPS, we propose the inclusion of a main entrance sign, the addition of PA speakers and security bollards. However, at Burnham, and based on its footprint, we will have security trees in place of those bollards. All three schools will have a repair of heat pumps, patching of stairs, and both Booth and Burnham will include the removal of blackboards. At Booth, there will be the addition of cooling in the front office, and at WPS, the LED library conversion for lighting efficiencies. The totals for each school from non-recurring funds include Booth at seventy-two thousand, five hundred, Burnham at fifty-nine thousand, five hundred, and WPS at thirty thousand, one hundred. So with a total budget increase of twenty-seven million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars offset by an agri-science revenue of one million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, the request to our towns is twenty-five million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. And this represents a four-point-two-six percent increase at referendum. So this slide, I just wanted to put this up to highlight the percentage for each of the towns in contrast, contrast to the previous year, which is twenty-two-point-eighty-one percent for Bridgewater, and their prior year was at twenty-three-point-sixty-five percent. Thirty-point-eighty-eight percent for Roxbury, the previous year was twenty-eight-point-seventy-two percent. And forty-six-point-thirty-two percent for Washington, the previous year being forty-seven-point-sixty-four percent. And again, this fluctuates, obviously, each year. Now, I have already outlined requests that will help sustain and/or improve our district. But we should always celebrate, and I know we do frequently, but we should always celebrate the notable strengths of our district that continue to occur based on investments we have made in the past. We have small class sizes. We're able to give individualized attention. We have an outstanding special education department and services, arts, enrichment and athletic opportunities for our students, a highly dedicated teaching and support staff, strong building and district leadership, parent and community volunteers, an agri-science academy. And we were just recently recognized in U.S. News and World Report in high schools, number twenty-one ranked in Connecticut out of one hundred and ninety-eight rankings and one thousand and ten nationally out of seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty schools ranked. That's impressive, and we should be proud. But I wanted to take a final moment to thank my staff, our leaders, board members, all of the selectmen in each of the towns, as well as our parents and community members of Bridgewater, Roxbury and Washington for their ongoing support of our schools, our children and our staff. We know we have the foundation for an outstanding school district, one that will continue to emerge as a welcoming, supportive and highly student-centered place of innovative and rigorous instruction that will usher our students towards success in the years ahead. Thank you. I do want you to know that our PowerPoint will be put online for all community tomorrow, so they'll be able to see all of the details of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you much. All right. There's no objection. No further questions, no objection. Consider this special meeting and report of adjourned by consent at six fifty-nine. Oh, no, public comment. Okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the regular meeting, the Board of Education, at seven o'clock PM. Secretary, would you care to take the... Here.
Alex McNaughton on.
Here by Zoom.
Justin Longley, Jen Cody, Jane Sargent, um, line, Pete Tagley and Mary Weber. Eleven out of twelve.
Okay, so we have nine voting, two online. That's eleven, one absent. Okay. At this point, I'd like to ask if there is any public comment on matters on this evening's agenda. Public comment on matters on tonight's agenda. I don't see any, so we'll move on. I'll turn it over to the superintendent for the introduction of our new Director of Teaching, Learning and Assessment.
So I am pleased to introduce Carrie Snowden. So I am pleased to introduce Carrie Snowden, who will be our new Director of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment. But I wanted to start by telling you about the hiring process for the position. We first went through a screening of about twelve qualified applicants, and seven were ultimately sent through to round one with a committee comprised of staff, district leaders, a parent, and a board member. From there, the committee sent two finalists to round two, which included central office directors, high school principal, director of counseling, and I was involved during this round, where the finalists had to present to the group based on a performance task they were given in advance. Actually, they were presenting to a mock Board of Education. The performance task focused on an aspect of our strategic plan, powerful learning, and how they would approach addressing the commitments under that priority and moving these forward as a leader. Carrie Snowden basically rose to the occasion during every part of the process and honestly knocked it out of the park, as they say. She demonstrated her intelligence, her leadership style, as well as her understanding and level of experience in all facets of curriculum and instruction. I happen to have had the privilege to work with Carrie in another district, and I have followed her work and career over the years, so I am super excited to welcome her to the central office staff. Carrie holds a B A in anthropology from Connecticut College, a master's in education from the University of Pennsylvania, and a sixth year in educational administration and supervision from the University of Bridgeport. Her most recent position was elementary principal at Hinley Elementary School in Darien, Connecticut. Prior to that, Carrie worked as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Innovation in Sherman. Before her administrative roles, Carrie worked as a lead teacher at Holly Elementary in Newtown. As many of you might know, worked here in Region Twelve as a teacher at Booth Free School from two thousand and four to two thousand and fourteen. So I want to say, welcome back, Carrie.
Thank you so much. That was such a nice introduction. Uh, Dr. Rodriguez, board members, leadership team, and community members, thank you so much for having me. I am thrilled to have the opportunity to come on back to Region Twelve, as Lori said, uh, was a fifth grade teacher at Booth Free School for ten years, and uh, my longest, that was my longest um, teaching position, and so it was uh, near and dear to my heart. When you teach every fifth grader in a town for ten years in a row, you really become ingrained in that community, and that's how I felt. Um, I'm joining Region Twelve at an exciting time. Uh, we've got a new strategic plan in place, and so the direction has been set, and I look forward to bringing my leadership experience to the plan and helping those goals come to realization. Thanks again for this amazing opportunity to serve Region Twelve.
Carrie, you were a fifth grade teacher at at Booth. You were my younger daughter's fifth grade teacher at Booth. She's she still remembers, Sarah remembers you, and she's she sends her best. But you were an epic teacher at Booth, and we really were, we were really sad when you left us. Uh, but the only bad thing about this is you're not in the classroom where you were brilliant, but you're going to be able to influence all of the classrooms. And so this is a, this is a major thing. Welcome back. We are thrilled to have you. Okay. I guess we will move on to the budget highlights. I will let you uh, call your team, the order you want them.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. Um, Dr. Rune, I will be sharing a few slides that reflect our elementary.
So I know Dr. Rodriguez went over the overall increases, but we're just going to summarize some of that information. So Booth Free School has requested sixty-four thousand dollars, three hundred, sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, which is an increase of just over twenty-one percent. While the Burnham School has requested sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, which is just under twenty-six percent increase.
At Washington Primary School, we're requesting eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars with an increase of twenty-one point nine percent.
So the biggest increase that's driving the increase is, first off, we're looking at the math program. Previously, this was grant funded over the past few years, but now it's being added to each individual school's budget moving forward. In addition, which I know many of our community members and board members will be happy about, is last year there was a reduction in the library books um, budget. That is being increased again based on student population. In addition, we're looking at our social emotional curriculum. We have been using Second Step since two thousand and eleven, which there is a new addition coming out, and we would like to start a curriculum a committee to look at the current program that they released, the second edition, and just looking at best research and seeing if there's any other curriculum out there that might with the research base be a better fit, but we are budgeting for that cost because we do feel like our schools are using
Okay, so um, the next slide talks about some elementary enrichments. Um, the first one is a program go over. Um, we had uh, a program improvement last year, so now that gets included in our own school-based budgets, that's about five thousand dollars in each of our uh, budgets. Um, then also instrument repairs. Um, we do have several instruments at all of the schools um, that are in disrepair at the moment. We'd like to repair those instruments and make them available for students that may need uh, instruments, and also to make them available once students forget their instruments, they can still take part in the um, the lessons that they have scheduled. The last item is field trips. Um, we do have a little bit of an increase in the field trips, particularly for one trip uh, that we'd like to take through fifth grade, and that is to Sturbridge Village, and the blessing is pretty expensive. Uh, it's approximately eight hundred dollars per school to do that trip, so we'd like to include that in the
All right, um, the next slide. This is not included in our personal budget, and Dr. Rodriguez spoke on these topics, but we just want to kind of summarize that this is part of our um, improvements at the elementary level. Is first, we're going to do the instrumental lessons increase of a point two staff increase, which right now our instrumental teacher does split a day between Booth and Burnham, and we have so many students with interests beyond just the few instruments that we do at school. We have some students who play the violin or the piano, and this would just offer more opportunity for students to be involved in the instrumental program and for us to have um, equity amongst all of our students for that time.
In addition to that, some of the schools have times where they're doing sectional lessons, P and band lessons, and in some places they only do band lessons, so we're really trying to make sure all buildings have equitable lessons for both sectionals and with band. Um, primary partners, um, as Dr. Rodriguez and also um, Mike Croft spoke about, that's something we're looking forward to, and that is not in our building budgets, but that's something that will be included for elementary students.
And finally, I know the board and the committee uh, community has heard a lot about the state mandate for picking um, a scientifically-based reading program, and we did pilot two programs, and we recently saw a survey, and it was a hundred percent of evoke for the R reading program amongst teachers and a hundred percent for state management. So that is something that we will report for next year.
So that ends our slides for our program improvements, enrichments, and uh, budget increases. Any questions or comments?
John.
Yes, I'm glad to hear that um, there are three uh, grant literacy tutors. Uh, is that one for every, each elementary school? Okay, and um, I know in the fall, the board had a uh, major
Those three literacy tutors that were grant funded will not be in the budget.
No, I, yeah, I realize that, but at least there is, is going to be um, yeah, going to be addressed. Um, but what is in the budget, uh, if I understood it correctly, is um, there's uh, increases in the budget, in your budgets for for the math proficiency. Um, can you name some specifics as far as where those dollars are going to be spent?
So those dollars that are listed in that slide, um, they're all related to material resources. So those are the student um, workbooks. Manual material.
Okay, so um, I know the board discussed this quite, quite a bit. I think it is in the end of November, uh, and there was a, we wondered whether or not um, interventionist, i.e. Ferris, or tutors, would help. Do you feel any need for that for additional staff hours?
I do not.
I feel currently that we have very um, the whole training, we saw intervention at each building that are supported in the classroom and forming a small group, and they're certified, and we feel like the support that we have, we know that those three tutors were grant funded, and each year they were given a letter that the grant was ending because we weren't sure and we had an extension, so we, I strongly feel, and I always feel it's students' best needs and interest that students are supported with that.
Thank you very much.
We want to thank just the board and the community members and our superintendent for just supporting our students.
Thank you.
Um, I've already been highlighted a few times, I think, in the budget tonight, so you've heard about my thirty-three percent. Um, so my biggest drivers obviously are student need um, in the department. So uh, I just have two, two sections to talk about um, tonight. Uh, contracted pupil support services. I have some students with um, some medical needs that require attention uh, that needed to be budgeted for this year. And additionally, I have two new outplacements that needed to be added to the budget this year as well. So those are my two big budget drivers that have brought the percentages up to thirty-three percent this year. So that's really um, the, the percentage increase, student need that has driven uh, the budget to this point. Any questions? Sure.
Hi, your outplacements, how much, how much is that?
So that's brought my, that's a hundred and ten thousand of the two hundred and forty-seven thousand.
And that's for two students? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, I'm here to talk about the facilities tonight, and our request is one million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand and two hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is an increase of nine point two three percent. Um, what's driving this increase? Building upkeep and maintenance costs have mostly increased across the board five percent. Our electricity's gone up eleven point seven seven, and our propane gas, John, has gone up to eighty-four point three nine, and I beat out. You're thirty-three percent, wasn't it? The propane went up um, tremendously. The cost of propane has steadily risen from a dollar ninety-nine in um, two thousand and twenty to three dollars and nine cents now a gallon. Um, in addition, the amount being used has increased tremendously as a result of the new pool pack rooftop unit that we bought in August of two thousand and twenty, but didn't really get started a lot because of COVID, and now we're really feeling the pinch of it. So basically, the old system had no ability to bring in outside air, so it only recirculated the inside. And the new system brings in a large amount of outside air and tempers it and puts it into the space and mixes it. This process uses much more fuel, but provides a far superior air quality. In the capital facilities, we're requesting one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, or like was stated earlier, an increase of one hundred and eighteen point nine nine percent uh, over last year, mostly because last year um, some monies were taken out of the, the account, and it accounts for this large increase. So most of these are infrastructure improvements and end-of-life improvements. Burnham School elevator seals, um, the superintendent went over these, electric panel at Booth Free School, A C in the nurses' office and the music in W P S, along with some new boiler circulators. Those are uh, heat pumps. So they're, they're sending hot water through our various portions of the school. Also included in here at the high school or middle high school is uh, fire alarm funds to improve the fire alarm system. We presently run copper lines to the outbuildings um, and to connect our fire alarms back to the main panel in the school. We're going to change that to fiber optic, which doesn't carry electricity in an effort to reduce long-term costs for any potential uh, additional lightning strikes here. We're going to do some repairs to the man's side roof. I know some of you were wondering when you saw the word roof, you know why we're doing that? The, the angled roof around the perimeter of the building has some shingles missing and needs some repairs. And we're going to include some P A speakers, and we're going to attach the exterior lights out in the front of the building to our computer system so that we could have better control. Anybody have any questions?
Questions? John.
Just a comment I heard on the radio today that EverSource was looking for another rate hike. I don't know if that's going to pertain to municipalities or just private residences or both, but.
To answer your question, yes, we built in some increases for EverSource.
Other questions? Thank you, Don. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, I would like to take the minutes of February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four off of the consent agenda in order to make a correction. On the very last page of the minutes, this was the vote coming out of executive session, and we have a mistaken person opposed. Ms. MacRulo did not vote no, Mr. Boniudo voted no. And so it should, so we need to remove Angela and place her with John. And then uh, I have a motion to adopt the minutes as amended.
No.
There's second? All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? It's like it's unanimous. Okay, so we corrected that. Um, we'll move on to reports. I want to thank the superintendent, Dr. Rodriguez, very much for this budget presentation this evening. I think it was clear. I think it was uh, it was open and was well done. I also appreciate having your, your principals and your staff here to tell us about their specific areas. I think that was a, a nice touch that it allowed us to get different approaches and different, an understanding on a, on a slightly more granular level, and so I really want to thank you for that. Um, at this point in time, um, there's a process, an ongoing process, and I would like everyone to take a look at this budget that's been given to you this evening carefully. And if you have questions, comments, suggestions, problems, let's bring those back sooner rather than later, if it all possible at our next board meeting. Uh, let's, uh, prior to that time or around that time, it would be nice if you could bring those to the superintendent so that we could have those discussed. Because what we're going to do is we've got a board meeting on March fourth, and uh, then on March eleventh, we have the district budget hearing, and that's when the public will have an opportunity to weigh in. And I would encourage you to do everything you can to get members of the public, parents, and others who have questions or concerns to focus on them now, because we want to hear from them on the eleventh. That's very important because after that meeting, uh, we are going to have a workshop on the eighteenth. Uh, and that workshop is going to be the And that workshop is going to be that if there were any issues that came up at the public hearing or any board member issues that were coming up and not getting quite to finish line, that's the night that's going to be really fixed. And we're going to have a budget in our mind that night that is the final budget that we're then going to take and discuss with the members of the boards of finance and three towns and selectmen. And we want to give, we want to make sure that the budget we bring to them is the budget that we're going to do. So, so when we get to the budget approval meeting on the twenty-fifth, the budget vote, that there really shouldn't be surprises. Those should come out and earlier in the process. So we created this process to make sure that we have a good opportunity to hear from the public and to incorporate the things we need to incorporate, but also make sure we finalize the budget prior to going to the towns. So we don't have a surprise where the actual budget that gets voted in is higher than the one that we brought. I think it's important that we do that because they're trying to make their plans. And one of the really helpful things that I know in my discussions with the selectman, one of the, the biggest thing they were concerned about was what's the reallocation of, of the budget based on the number of students in the towns. That's the thing that always catches them. And this year they got that presentation. They got, they got an inkling of who is going to have to pay more and who's going to, who's going to save some money. And so that I think is, is very important. So we want to make sure that when we go to them with a budget, know, they now know what the difference in the registration is going to be. Then they'll have the budget and they'll be able to plan properly, because this is about seventy percent of most towns' budgets is our budget. So I think, I think this is the idea. So I can't stress enough, please, 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 get an early look at it and bring your concerns forward sooner rather than later. So the superintendent has a chance and Nicole Grant has a chance, director of finance, to go through and woodshed those issues so that we can get us answers. We have them. And I think the sooner we do that, the easier it will be when we get to the public portion of it, to be able to focus on the public issue rather than focusing on our own internal issues. So that's what I would request. If anyone has an issue with that, come see me, but I, I think this will be a good process that will allow us to get a budget out in a orderly way. So that was all I had to say. I'll turn it over to the superintendent for her report. Yeah, I'm sorry, question?
Ms. Florrie, you said that the, that your presentation will be available. Where would somebody go to see that?
It would go to, to our region twelve website, including documents that go with it.
Will it have a special place on the website or will it, will you have to drill down into budget office?
We're going to have it front and center.
Front and center.
A special place and Ben will help with.
Okay, good. That, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
All right, good. Now, Dr. Rodri, your report.
Okay, so I only have a few items this evening. We're planning to bring staff leaders, army directors, teaching, learning and assessment in early April to develop our new teacher evaluation and professional development plan, which will need to be in place by the fall, as I mentioned, when I was presenting the budget. There are models out there, one from the state, one from C E A. Our plan is to bring staff and leaders around the table to develop and finalize a plan we feel represents what we believe will be conducive to a plan that supports effective teaching, evaluation and staff development. We are bringing in a rep from C E A and we'll meet in early April, so I will have more details about that plan. We also have a diversity recruit, recruitment plan that I've mentioned to you, I know before, that will need to be approved by the board by March fifteenth. So I will be meeting with some members of my admin team who have said they would be willing to help in the development. There are tools the state has provided to be sure we have developed appropriate goals that are measurable regarding diversity recruitment. And that's all I have. I do want to also mention in personnel, we have some new appointments. Chris Carlon and Drama, the S V S Orchestra Director. Stephen Gritty, J B softball coach at Chapag. Angela Leclerc, theater co-director at Chapag. And Robert Profeta, theater co-director at Chapag. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I don't know, I, I can't really see Alex up there, but I don't know if he has any treasurer's report. I, I talked to him earlier. But it looks like he's waving something, so I think he does want to speak. Can you, can you? Oh, thumbs down, no report. Okay, excellent. So we have, we have no treasurer's report. And Nicole, I don't know if you have anything you want to report to us in lieu of that. No, you're good. Okay. We'll go on to committees, curriculum and educational program.
So we had a, a meeting earlier tonight and first off, we are very excited at the hiring of Carrie Stonen. We look forward to working with her. Definitely, so it's awesome. So the focus of our meeting tonight was really just to get an idea of the two reading programs that were piloted. I'll really just focus on art, which is the one that the teachers resoundingly approved. As a teacher myself, I mean, just getting a hundred percent of teachers to agree on one thing is, is amazing. So that's, there's something good about this program. So basically what I'll do is just kind of run through some of the highlights, what Emily Rue and Emily Judd kind of shared with us. So teachers said that student engagement was much higher with art compared to the My View program. The structure of the lessons was much better. There's routines that are easily built in to the day, as an example. Morning meetings for kindergarten, you know, so you can easily transition from getting to school and then going right into a reading lesson. Social studies and science lessons are easily integrated. And we were able to look at, you know, the Emily and Emily brought examples or samples from all K through five. So we were able to see what these lessons actually looked like. We, we were able to see what the kids were, were doing. It looked great, like fun, actually. There's movement breaks built in. Another big thing here is, you know, we have three elementary schools, obviously. And one of the things is making sure that we have consistency across the, you know, each of our three schools to make sure everyone in first grade and so on is getting the same instruction. So that's one thing teachers said was that it's, arc is much better at making that happen. Another thing, I'm just hearing some of the examples of what the students were, you know, the reporting, what the students were saying. They, they seemed excited. There's this idea of accountable talk. It's easier for teachers to assess speaking and listening skills. And I mean, it's, it's great that we're focusing on these skills at such an early age where, where children are learning how to appropriately behave and sort of learn how to speak and listen with other people in a classroom appropriately. I think that's.
Okay. All right.
Oh, Mary's got a question.
I'm sorry, Mary.
I don't have a question. I just have a, a statement. I really like that the teachers were also, not only the administrators were brought in to look at all the reading programs from the beginning and then their assessment that a hundred percent agree that this is the, the program that they want. That's just, to me, that's incredible. You never get that. And that's, that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
I just want to add one more thing too.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I forgot to mention that teachers kind of mentioned how much easier it was to differentiate lessons, you know, make it appropriate, appropriate level of challenge for, for each kid. So that's, that's a huge plus.
Very good. Any, any other questions? Okay, now we'll move on to at advanced. Joe?
Nothing to report. Our next meeting is in March.
Okay. Finance and operations, I don't think Alex has a report, so I'm seeing thumbs down. No report there. Policy. We have two policies on tonight's agenda, so we'll take up, we'll take them up when we get there. Negotiations, we have three unions negotiate with. I'm in communication with Tom, our counsel, Tom Mooney, to discuss setting those up. Soon as I know something, I'll get back to the committee. Strategic long-range planning.
That's a report we haven't met.
Okay. All right, we have no old business, so we'll go on to new business. And the first item of new business is to consider for approval, a first reading of policy, sixty-one forty-four point two equitable identification of gifted and talented students. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this policy, but the changes were primarily statutory changes that caused some things to have to be added to the end of it. There were some minor provisions, but it wasn't, it wasn't much really of a change. And so the policy committee recommends that we adopt it as modified. Do I have a motion to do so? Is there a second? Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. It appears to be unanimous, nine to nothing. The next item of new business is to consider for approval, a first reading of policy sixty-one seventy-three enrollment in an advanced course or program and challenging curriculum. Again, this is a similar situation in which there were some statutory changes and some additions that were related to that. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or, or concerns. Okay, do I have a motion to approve that policy for first reading? Second, moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. It's unanimous again on that one. The third item is to review is the review and possible approval of expenditures totaling eighty-two thousand, one hundred dollars from the elementary capital non-recurring fund and ten thousand dollars from the reach restricted fund for repairs and improvements to elementary facilities is presented and recommended by the finance and operations committee. Nicole, do you want to take this one?
Sure, I'll speak to it.
You have an attachment.
Yeah, there was an attachment in the package. Facilities and our finance and operations committee looked at this at our February twelfth meeting, all these individual repairs. We did, we, to put it on, to advance it to the board so that you could hear Florrie's budget presentation, because these are the same items that she referenced in one of her slides that we moved out of the budget and over to this pocket of funding. This is funding with with the exception of the reach restricted funds. These are the elementary capital funds that the board funds a hundred thousand dollars each year for so, to our leases to do work on our elementary schools. And these are the things we're proposing to do with some of that funding. We'd like to get started on this stuff right away. So if the board approves that tonight, we can do so. And then we do have a reach restricted account where the reach tuition that we collect for the kids to attend the reach program is deposited. And at times it runs a surplus. It's currently running a surplus, so we'd like to use some of the reach funds to do two of the things that are listed here. One is to remove a playground tree, which I believe is becoming hazardous with its age. And to put some security barriers in around the back of the school where the reach program is, where there's some glass, sort of board seen in glass windows. So that's the request is to have the board approve these expenditures tonight.
Good. Mary.
The trees, the big tree in the middle?
Which tree?
The big one in the middle?
Fire. Fire with the wooden structures to the
Oh, yes, the blind, the bird blind. Yes, I, I was hoping it wasn't our friendship tree.
Any other questions?
Can you hear me, Greg?
Do I have a motion to approve the expenditures of eighty-two one? Oh.
Can you hear me, Greg?
Yes.
Five thousand seems awfully expensive to remove a tree.
Say, say that again, Alex. You got cut off.
Five thousand dollars seems awfully expensive to remove a tree.
Let me ask you a question. Does that include stump removal? So, okay, Mary. Oh.
Yeah. Alex, I just had several trees removed in my house and that with stump removal is, is pretty good. That's a good price.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the expenditures of eighty-two one hundred, eighty-two thousand, one hundred dollars in elementary capital non-recurring fund and ten thousand dollars from the reach restricted fund for the repairs and improvements to the elementary facilities as presented to the meeting and included on this list that came with it. There a second? Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. I believe it is unanimous. Now, at this point in time, if there is no objection and no one has anything else to present to the meeting, I will declare this meeting adjourned by consent at seven thirty-seven P M.